The Monday, September sixteenth, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Haglund.
Present.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Present.
Counselor Hardern.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Tassoni.
Present.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
President Kuzinskius.
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and state your legislative allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening and inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions and direct us towards the attainment of the city government. We pray that you bless and protect all the people of our city and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliver in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Okay, no one is recording tonight's meeting. We will begin with the reading and approval of the September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Counselor Dernalawitz?
I move to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Mack, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Just want to note that since Counselor Tassoni is on the phone this evening, all motions will have a roll call vote. There are no public hearings. Communications from the mayor, communications, item one one three eight eight, a resolution to support the administration's request for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to take over custodianship of Route one forty from Green Street to the Winchenden Town Line. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on this resolution. This is for custodianship from the, from Green Street to the Winchenden Town Line. Some of it is currently overseen by the state. The state is looking to take full custodianship of the state to oversee it for plowing, salting, and other maintenance. The legal department reviewed this and the DPW is in agreement. The state will be accountable for maintaining and if there is any issues, the city can hold the state accountable. The Finance Committee voted to recommend passage of this resolution to the full council.
Second.
Motion, is that on form of motion?
Yes.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to pass the resolution. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one three nine zero, a measure authorizing a five-year contract period for school district copier-printer services. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee just met on this. We take up these many times as the city can only enter a three-year contract, but a five-year contract can get better pricing. Therefore, the Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to authorize the measure allowing the city to enter a five-year contract for school district, district copier-printer services.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Mack, to authorize the city to negotiate a five-year contract period for school district copier-printer services. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Haglund?
I'll just be abstaining from this item this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. You want to abstain? Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Abstaining.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one one three nine one, a measure authorizing a five-year contract period for the fire alarm and sprinkler testing services. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Same reasoning as the previous one. Able to get better pricing for a fire alarm and sprinkler testing services if we go for a five-year contract. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to authorize the measure allowing the city to enter a five-year contract for fire alarm and sprinkler testing services.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Mack, to authorize the city to negotiate a five-year contract period for five, for fire alarm and sprinkler testing services. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one three nine two, a communication from the mayor providing an update on the progress at Waterford Community Center. Counselor Dernalawitz?
Can I make a motion to place the communication on file?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Mack, to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just, where this has been something that's been going on for the last few years in the city, I wanted to provide the council with an update on what to expect moving forward now that the programs are getting ready to fully launch, and we're going to get ready for our first ribbon in the building by the end of the year that we can cut. The, a lot of construction has been done in the building itself. If you drive by now, you'll see that there's a lot of plywood in front of the front doors. The reason being for that is that the previous doors that were there for the school were not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. They were actually too narrow, so you could not fit a wheelchair in those doors. What's happening right now is, I call them the grocery store-style doors, where when you walk up to those, the doors will automatically open so that people don't have to worry about any compliance when you're going to the senior center or any of the other entities that would be in that building. New lighting has been installed throughout the building itself, too. This is new LED lighting, and it's all motion sensor, too, to make sure that even if a light is forgotten to be turned off, we aren't wasting any electricity costs that are there. Prior to when the building was a school itself, or excuse me, prior to where we are now, when the building was still operating as a school itself, every classroom had their own circuit breaker, and you turn the lights off in your room by flipping the circuits every time that it was there. So this is something that, again, we're moving forward as best we can with the resources that we have. The plumbing has all been completely redone. Bathrooms have been upgraded on the two-story wing that used to be the classroom wing of the building. There's new mini-split heat systems and electric heat that's been installed to help us with our fuel costs that we have in this building. A lot of the plumbing has been upgraded over there as well. The boiler's having some work done to it now. So the construction on the inside is moving forward. The kitchen is almost completely upgraded, too, and we're working on a new hood system for the kitchen and potentially a second hood going in for a secondary kitchen as well. A lot of the funding that's been coming for these, the renovations that have been done, some of it's been grant funding. There's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of the city's ARPA funds that were put into that. There was a loan taken out by the city council that went towards the two-story classroom wing and energy efficiency upgrades and some painting. And then there was a four hundred thousand dollar state earmark that we received from Representative Zlatnik that went towards a lot of the ADA upgrades, a lot of the kitchen upgrades and the plumbing upgrades that have been there throughout the building, and a hundred percent of the electrical upgrades that have been done so far was paid for out of that grant that we received from the representative as well. All this to say is that the building's ready for our first tenants to start moving in. I did receive the first draft of the lease agreements from the Law Department this morning. I anticipate at the next meeting we'll have the lease agreement for the Community Action Committee, the CAC, before the city council for your review and consideration. The reason why the CAC to be first is that is done in what's called a grant agreement from the city, so it doesn't have a regular lease. A regular lease is subject to the provisions of thirty B where we'd have to go out for a request for proposal process, just like we do when we're selling land. But what the general laws allow is if there's a nonprofit providing certain human and social services in the community, they can receive what's called a in-kind grant. So the space of the building is the grant. That's because several years ago, the CAC used to receive a portion of our CDBG funds and then pay an equivalent of that back to the city in a rental payment for the use of the Pleasant Street building that they're currently operating in, and seeing that it didn't make sense to write a check to someone just to write the check back to us for the same amount, we use this provision of the general laws that allows for an in-kind grant of space instead of the funding to be due, and that actually exempts it from the provisions of chapter thirty B, so we don't have to go out for bid for that one so long. But it does hold them to the task that they need to provide a certain amount of services to the residents of the city that are in need. That is the type of agreement that they currently have at Pleasant Street, and it's basically a transfer of that agreement from Pleasant Street over to Waterford Street School with the new updated space and the new updated facilities and all this other stuff written into the lease agreement that, you know, what they'll be in charge of over there and what space they'll be occupying over there. As that's being done at the same time, we're going to be releasing the request for proposals, the RFP process, for the remaining areas with the two-story classroom wing and the kitchen being the other two areas that we're going to put the RFP out for. The senior center and the historic commission are also looking at relocating in that building. We're probably going to put those in after the other entities are all settled and done with, just to be sure that we have, you know, the tenants who are paying the city in first so we can have some type of revenue to continue in the last-minute upgrades that need to be done on a rolling basis with the funding that we're receiving coming in and get everything we need to do done there, too. So the project's just about in the spot where we can have people in the building full-time, and it'll be great. But I just want to provide the council with a, just an update where this has been a two-year process since we started to where we are now, and since you're going to start to see the lease agreements coming before you soon for your consideration, just what have we done in between? I thought it was good to make sure the council knew about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one three nine three, a measure naming the property located at sixty-two Waterford Street as the Waterford Community Center. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Mack.
Yes. This has to be changed from a school designation. It's an administrative action. The final name of the building will come to the city council for approval, but this needs to be done before the leases can, can, the leases can be done and to move forward to have the building occupied. So I make a motion to move the, to move, I make a motion to designate the property located at sixty-two Waterford Street as the Waterford Community Center.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Dernalawitz, to designate the property located at sixty-two Waterford Street as the Waterford Community Center. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one one three nine four, discussion of the new city park at the location of the former Mackey Block. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President, leading to a motion. At the last meeting, I remarked on the opening of the new park at the former Mackey Block. I expressed my happiness at its completion and how I've already seen many people using it. Since then, it's been brought to my attention that there have been, that there may be serious issues with how the construction was completed, specifically concerning compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is especially important because when the mayor brought this item before us in June of two thousand and twenty-two, the existing law not meeting ADA compliance due to the grade of the slope was in part a factor in the motivation to invest in the creation of the park. Over the weekend, I looked at what the mayor submitted and what the council approved for this project, and there do appear to be some discrepancies that I think warrant further investigation and explanation. Therefore, I move the council through the authority under section twenty-five of the city charter, initiate an investigation into if anything did indeed go wrong with the construction of the former park at Mackey Block, how, if any errors did occur, and what remedies the city may take to address the problem and to address any possible process improvement in the future. Furthermore, that the council president appointed counselor to undertake the investigation and report back to the full council at the earliest time that a thorough recounting of the facts may be made. Thank you, Madam President.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor.
One, question. When did this go onto the agenda? Because it's not on my copy.
It was, the agenda was amended today, and it was sent out by the clerk's office.
Okay, so it just came out today, because I have not seen this at all.
Yeah, it was amended today. The agenda was amended on Friday with the previous item one one three nine three.
I saw that, yes.
And then it was amended today as well with item one one three nine four.
I would like to object, please.
Okay. By section twenty-eight of the city charter, any ordinance, order, or resolution may be passed through all its stages of legislation at one session, provided that no member of the council objects thereto. But if any member of the council objects, further action on the measure shall, unless it is an emergency measure as defined in section twenty-six, be postponed for that meeting. So since this item was objected on, we will not take it up anywhere at this meeting, and it will be taken up at the next meeting. Orders. Item one one three eight nine, an order authorizing twelve thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, payment of previous fiscal year bill for public building utilities. Mayor's unclassified account. Counselor Dernalawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on this item. The auditor had reached out saying they need to compile more information to get all the invoices together. It was our recommendation at this time to remove it from the calendar and wait for a resubmission of the bills, and I move to do so.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Mack, to remove the item from the calendar. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Orders. Item one one three eight nine, I'm sorry, I just said that one. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, there is none. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee. Item one one two eight nine, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Part One, thereof entitled administrative legislation. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee met on this. It has been with the council for some time. It is a lengthy document that we, as we have discussed in the past. This is the, I think, third iteration of it as well. The edits the mayor has made, additions are plus, trying to consolidate and make things more uniform in the boards and commissions. But there is a lot to go through, and there were some recommendations made during the meeting as well to have the information that was removed included as well for comparison. So we respectfully ask for more time in this item going forward.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item one one three seven zero, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter five ninety, thereof entitled solid waste, to change the fee for solid waste collections. This item, along with item one one three seven one, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter five fifty-three, thereof entitled sewer rates. In item one one three seven two, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter one seventy-one, thereof entitled personnel to amend Schedule E, non-union compensation schedule. These were, had insufficient time in between the first printing of the publication and this evening's meeting, per council rule nine. And so, due to that, no action can be taken at this time. Between this meeting and our next regular meeting, there will be sufficient time and an action will be able to be taken at that time. This is similar to our previous meeting, but I was assured by the clerk's office at the last meeting that they would be sure that the publication was submitted, and it was. And so, we do need to take more time on these. We've also been notified this is, this is not time-sensitive within that amount of time, so the action can be taken at the next council meeting. Item one one three eight seven, a resolution relating to the future of Coleman Street School. Counselor Mack?
Yes, the Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee met on this tonight and voted to move the resolution to the full council for approval. So I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Dernalawitz, to pass the resolution. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Safety Committee, item one one two zero four, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter six hundred, entitled vehicles and traffic, section twenty-four, entitled parking prohibited on certain streets, Edgell Street from Elm Street to Lawrence Street. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a meeting on this last Friday, and we also had a public hearing, and there was several members of the public that had submitted their concerns with this item. Therefore, the Safety Committee voted unanimously to refer the, back to the Traffic Commission with this additional feedback from the public. And I've reached out to the deputy chief to get that ball in motion with the Traffic Committee, but at the meantime, I would ask for more time on this item.
If there is an objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item one one three four nine, an application of Echo ATM LLC for a license to deal in secondhand articles at six seventy-seven Tiffany Boulevard inside Walmart. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a business that has been at Walmart for a long time. It is in good standing with both the police department and the city itself. Therefore, we unanimously moved to recommend approval of the application. Nice move.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardern to approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kuzinskius.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. At this time, I would like to call Counselor Dernalawitz to take up item number one one three five zero. I will recuse myself and step away from this matter because I have a potential conflict.
Okay, next item is item one one three five zero, an application by Gardner Tenpence Incorporated for a bowling alley license at five sixty West Broadway. Report from the Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is a longstanding business. It is in good standing regarding in reports from the police department as well as the city clerk. Therefore, we recommend to approve the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardern to approve the application by Gardner Tenpence Incorporated for a bowling alley license at five sixty West Broadway. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Yes.
Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Tassoni.
Yeah.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Counselor Tyros.
Yes.
And President Kuzinskius has recused.
Ten yeas, the motion carries. I would now like to call President Kuzinskius back to the chair to take up the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Dernalawitz. I'm going to call a brief recess. Service Committee, item one one three two six, a petition by National Grid Elm Street and Cross Street relocate pole, one solely-owned pole approximately fifteen feet. Report from Public Service Committee, Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I would respectfully request on behalf of the committee more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item one one three eight five, a measure to grant National Grid an easement to install a transformer at ninety-five Pleasant Street. Report from the Public Service Committee, Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Thank you, Madam President. I respectfully request more time so the committee can review.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. There is no unfinished business in matters for reconsideration. There is no new business. Counsel comments and remarks? Are there any counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to go ahead and give a big shout-out to our deputy chief, Nicholas Maroney. He graduated from the prestigious FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, I think I said that right, as part of a two-hundred-and-ninety-one first-class alongside two-hundred-and-fifty-three other law enforcement professionals from across the U.S. and twenty-six countries. The National Academy is known as one of the most prestigious law enforcement executive trainings in the world. Where very few executives are accepted, the National Academy is known for its advanced communication, leadership, and fitness training, preparing officers to executive roles. So I just want to say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Further council comments and remarks? Councillor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I respect the rules of this council, so I won't be commenting on previous business from this evening. However, moving forward, I hope that the rules of this council are not used to prevent debate on items properly before us. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor. Further council comments and remarks? Okay, I will entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Cormier, seconded by Councillor Tyros. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Cormier.
Yes.
Councillor Heglin.
Yes.
Councillor Dernalowits.
Yes.
Councillor Hardern.
Yes.
Councillor Heath.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Tesoni.
Yeah.
Councillor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
Councillor Tyros.
Yes.
President Kaczynski.
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees you so well, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the peoples who represent us, we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.
The meeting stays adjourned. Thank you, everyone.